It will stand right now for the invocation, followed by the pledge of belief. Heavenly Father, come you have prayed today, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here today, Lord, and thank you for all the blessings in our life. We also give you thanks for the grace and gift of your son, Jesus, Lord. Lord, as we're here for this meeting, be with us as we make good decisions for the future of this institution, Lord, be with each person that's here today. Lead us, guide us, direct us in all that we do, Lord. All these things, we'll be asking your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion and a second, any other discussion on this? Voice vote, all those in favor of the agenda, please say aye. Any opposed? Number two, consideration and approval of the minutes of the January board meeting. Motion's been made to approve the minutes. There's a second on the floor, any discussion on this? Okay, motion and second, we'll have another voice vote, all those in favor of the January board minute approval, say aye. Any opposed? We move on to number three, consideration of the college financial report. And what time the program will begin.
Thank you. Starting on page eight of your board books. Look at the current fiscal years compared to the previous fiscal year as of in November. You can see in our revenue categories, a little bit behind, particularly tuition, behind where we were last fiscal year, and that's reflective of our enrollment trends that we planned for. On the following page looking at expenses, you can see salaries and benefits slightly ahead of last year, reflecting the salary increases that we had as part of the budget this year. Operating expenses behind, showing savings and so forth that we've had this fiscal year. And then on page 10, you can see the net of the two, the revenues minus expenses, we're just ever so slightly ahead of last fiscal year. The next two pages are the details that underpin those, that graph. Look at page 13, we look at our budget versus actual. So you can see particularly most tuition and fees that were performing quite well, because although enrollment is dropping, we did think of that. In other categories, you can see that they're coming along nicely, as well being halfway through the fiscal year. On the bottom half of the page, looking at expenses, again using that 50% as somewhat of a guide, you can see that pretty much all those categories are right there on target. On page 15, you can see our capital budget, a number of those projects certainly are underway. I'm sure we'll get an update on that in the president's report, on a number of those projects, particularly in CRISP and continued renovations to the Westover Building, one of our largest. Following that then, looking at our cash position on page 18. This is just a couple of days into February, where our cash accounts stood. Pretty typical for this time of the year. We haven't brought in or paid out spring financial aid and so forth yet at that point. So you can see that our cash is a little bit higher than in some of the other months. We'll see that drop again in the latter months as we distribute aid. Following that then, we have our list of certificates of deposits. We did not have any changes in that this month. And then lastly, on page 22, on our bid report, we did issue a bid for window replacement in the Westover Building. We have not yet awarded that bid.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Board of directors, any motion to approve or approve? So move. Motion and a second. Any other discussion on the financial report? All those in favor of the financial report, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Charlotte. We move on to the president's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with a little bit of construction update. So the CRISP Technology Center expansion is on time, on schedule, and on budget. They project that this will be completed along with the fire science maintenance building expansion. They expect completion on that on or about June 1st. So that is, if they make that date, they'll be slightly ahead of their original projections. So they are doing an extremely good job in handling the project. I cannot pin up good things about this particular contractor. The updates to the Westover Building are going well. The majority of that is in-house. So we are doing that very efficiently, but it does take a little bit of time. The next and really last major piece of that renovation will be the chemistry lab. So the chemistry lab is original to the building. We now are at the point of having alumni who are parents, who are bringing their children to view the campus on making the decision that they're going to go here, and saying things like, wow, this is just like when I was here, except it's a little more warm. It is outdated. There are a number of modern instructional techniques that we've advanced a little bit in the last 40 or so years. And so updating that part of our facility will be a major thing that the science faculty will be greatly thankful for, as the new design allows them to actually pass their students without turning sideways and shimmying between the chemical stations. We also held on January 24th, our strategic planning retreat that was orchestrated, planned, and executed by the Office of Institutional Effectiveness. They did a great job in putting that together. And this was the kickoff of our planning and budgeting cycle. So this is where all of the budgeting and planning managers come together for an entire day and talk about, in this case, the new strategic plan, Aspire 2025, and the planning priorities and all of the work that will move us forward over the next year, beginning July 1st. So it was a great day, had great feedback from the event, and people really got off on the right foot for their planning and budgeting. We have followed that up with numerous meetings and a whole lot of individual trainings conducted by Dr. Mary Beth Payne and Ms. Charlotte Eubank. So everybody is getting retrained or trained anew, as the case may be, so that we do an excellent job with preparing the budget and the plan for the coming year. Also, we had our inaugural Hall of Fame banquet. The board chair, Dr. Tim Hager, was kind enough to serve as the MC for the evening. We had 280 seats. We sold 280 seats. It was an absolute packed house. And what you see there is a picture of this year's in our inaugural inductees. So that is the 1979 team. Mr. J. P. McLean as supporter, Paul Quarter King, representing ladies basketball and volleyball, in fact, and Mr. Matt Palmer, who was baseball. So, and of course, Coach Gene Vess, who, yes, he's right there in front of the picture. So this is Coach Vess's 50th season. And I do also want to mention that we are counting down to 1,300 wins. We're at 1,298 right now, and we play Thursday and Saturday. So I would encourage everyone to come pack the house. I don't think we'll live long enough to see this happen with anyone again. But we may see 1,400 wins if he'll just keep going. So then, following that, it was the weekend for the alumni reunion. We, the next morning after Hall of Fame, we did a pancake breakfast. And we, this event went very well. We actually had 150 people show up for the pancake breakfast. And that was our first year. To give you an idea of how successful that is, the Kiwanis Club has done a pancake breakfast in Butler County Papa Bluff for probably the last 30 years, maybe longer. They average about 500. So to be able to attract 150 participants the first year, that far exceeded the expectation that we had for the event. And then that afternoon, we inducted or recognized our prime alumni star, Ms. Kristy Frazier-Moore. So we had a very nice reception that afternoon here in the Tenon Center. And following that, we of course had the alumni reunion game, where we once again introduced our inductees to the Hall of Fame and our alumni star, and played a doubleheader against State Fair. So as they would say, where I'm from, and a good time was had by all. Then we hosted the last ballet for the season. And in fact, this will be the last ballet from Moscow Festival for the Patrons of the Arts. We're moving to doing the Nutcracker next year in lieu of this one. This was another almost sold-out show. This is our 10th year doing ballet in Papa Bluff. And we have either sold it out or come very close to selling it out the entire time we have done it. So it has been a very successful run. And that ballet was sponsored by the Erase Foundation. Then our 29th Annual Jazz Fest was held. This is a huge event put on by Professor's buddy Cindy White. It brings a whole lot of music-minded people onto the college campus. It is a three-day event. And they run clinics for out-of-the-area high schools. There are a huge number of bands and participants that come. They put on a concert, and we do a professional concert as part of this. So it serves a lot of our community doing this event. We are the second-oldest jazz band, jazz festival in Missouri. So Mineral Area started theirs a year before us, and SEMO actually started theirs three years after us. So Cindy and Buddy White do an excellent job. This is primarily Buddy White that does this. He is our band director and of course, music faculty. Wonderful event. If you're into jazz, it is a time that you should not miss. Excellent opportunity for some really high-quality performers. And this was the professional show that we booked as part of the Patrons of the Arts, to be part of the Jazz Fest. They are actually a jazz gospel group, which is kind of interesting. They put on a little different twist to jazz, brought a little different crowd in, and did an absolutely wonderful job as part of the Jazz Fest. Then we move into upcoming events. I've already talked about the countdown to 1,300. Remember, Thursday night and Saturday, 7:00 PM. Then we are hosting the Earthquake Summit, 6:00 PM on February 20th, then all day on February 21st. We anticipate about 500 participants to be on campus to meet with SEMA and discuss earthquake strategies and earthquake risk and preparedness. So I would mention that the college is designated as the hub for all of the activity and all of the response activity for a major earthquake event on the New Madrid Fault. So we will actually be the point of focus for all of emergency services serving all of the impacted areas. So we're proud to be partners with SEMA-FEMA in providing those services.
Is that the VA has generators? And I thought that they were using that for part of their, is SEMA and College?
Yes, that's all integrated, VA is part of that. All of the electrical utility companies, all of the emergency response teams, the Corps of Engineers, all of those facilities. And when they looked at the maps and studied where they could reach out from, they designated the campus as where they wanted to do that. We're far enough off the earthquake zone that they think the damage here will still be serviceable, because you've actually, the wave will have to have passed through Crowley's Ridge, and it will get the Ozark Bluff that we set just back from. So most of that damage will be dissipated by the time it gets here. They actually predict that if the earthquake was the same size as the 1811, 1812 earthquake, that not much would be standing from Crowley's Ridge to the river from somewhere in Illinois, hallway southwards. So an extremely significant potential event. Of course, there is no predicting.
So is this the federal headquarters, or is it state?
Both state and federal. So it's a combination FEMA, SEMA designation. It'll be, and we actually periodically do drills for that. So they'll show up and do kind of a small mock tabletop exercise to prepare for it. So Construction Job Fair. This is part of a new workforce development program that we are doing in cooperation with AGC Missouri, which is a trade group that works with all of the heavy construction industries all across the state. So we have partnered with about a dozen contractors, and we are putting on a heavy highway program. And what makes this program unique is the partnership that we have formed. So AGC Missouri has donated funds to cover the cost of instruction and students. And all of the partner contractors have agreed to run the program where all the participants are hired prior to them beginning the program. So the participating contractors and businesses actually will have the students on their payroll. And we're going to run a 40-hour-a-week educational program. They'll go through X number of weeks, and then they will go back to their employer, begin their work, do on-the-job training, and then after a little bit of that, come back for the next module. So that we are actually preparing a workforce that knows their direction from day one. They are incentivized to complete the program. And we have very tight restrictions and requirements in that you have to show up and participate just like you're on the job, because in fact, you are. And you have a pathway. And it solves a lot of issues in the industry. So finding people with the right skills to serve the need, and finding people that have what we refer to as the soft skills of actually showing up, showing up on time, ready to work, without some of the problems that our partners are experiencing with turnover. So it acts as, this is basically a pre-screening process with the Construction Job Fair, but it's a pretty good screening process going through six to eight weeks of training while you're on the clock. And I believe a lot of the reason we have such good partners in this, and so many partners willing to do it, is they can very easily see that the money they're going to invest in that employee is cheaper than hiring the wrong one and turning them over on the job, time and time again. So we're building a stable, skilled workforce, meeting and eating the community, both on the student side and on the employer's side. So really proud of this program. It's a very different, well, can I believe y'all are participating in one of that. So, and it's open if any of the employers have an existing employee that they think is a good employee worth investing in, they can be sent through the program to gain additional skills. So it is a nationally-recognized curriculum. And I'm really looking forward to seeing how well this one works out. Then the Endowment Trust Trivia Night, February 27th in Papa Bluff, right at the Holiday Inn. This is always a very successful event. If anyone is interested, we do have room for just a couple of more teams and a couple of more people. So if anyone has interest in participating in Trivia Night, your opportunity is now. And then our next partner show with the Rogers Theater. This is a second year of a partnership with the Rogers Theater between the Rogers and Patrons of the Arts, where we are co-promoting and co-booking some shows. So we have had, I think, five, this is our fifth show that we have done. We've had great success with these. Really allows the Patrons of the Arts to expand into some genres of entertainment and cultural events that they probably would not have ventured into before, and allows the Rogers to build a lot more of a season for their following. And we're actually building audience. If you look at how the audience structure has changed over the last two years, we now have more patrons participating in what Rogers is going and doing, and we have more people who are friends of the Rogers coming to the Tenon Fine Arts Center to see those shows. So it's really been a successful partnership. And a great thing when all of the different parts of a community can come together to move forward in a positive way. Then March 5th, Brick Oven Pizza Night for Three Rivers College. We will get up to 50% of all the proceeds will be given to the Endowment Trust. So on March 5th, you're planning to eat something anyways. Since you're gonna eat anyways, you might as well eat at the Brick Oven Pizza that night. Because in reality, you're getting a discount because you're helping build a future for a student. So if you, and if you don't like pizza, they have salads and everything else. So, and you don't even have to stop there and sit down to eat. You can do it through the drive-thru. You can order it and pick it up and take it home. So you could actually not just feed yourself. You could feed your entire family or your entire neighborhood, if you so decide. So this is a wonderful opportunity to help students, help build futures, and have some high-quality pizza or salad, or whatever else you'd like to have the brick oven does. So this has been a great event past, I think this is our third or fourth year that we have done this. They're great partners for us, and it's a pretty good pizza. Wizard of Oz. We'll be doing two weekends of this. This is part of the Center Stage Community College Production. This is going to be a really good show. If you have any desire to see top-quality stage performance. This is, I was talking to someone just the other day, and community theater frequently is, maybe not, yes, not good. Frequently, community theater is, three friends got together and they decided they would put on a play, but they really don't know what they're doing. Center Stage does an exceptional job at producing stage performances. If you've seen The Little Mermaid, if you saw Beauty and the Beast, you have seen the level of quality that Center Stage produces. You are not going to see a college community theater at a higher level than what you will see right here. It is some amazing production work. And these are people from the community. You're going to see kids from the dance studio. You're gonna see elementary school kids. You're gonna see trustee Shaw. You're going to see members of faculty and staff, members of our community, students. A lot of people are participating in this. And the interesting thing about this particular show, this is the largest cast we have ever done for a performance. So this is going to be interesting to see. I have had a preview of some of the costuming. Our production department built the Tin Man's costume from scratch, and it is phenomenal. It is really going to be an amazing show. So take your time, bring your kids, bring your grandkids, bring your family. Get your tickets soon, because this one's going to sell out. Spring break. By this point in the year, everyone is ready. So we will be closed March 11th, 12th, and 13th. Everybody can take a breather, go out and hopefully enjoy the sunshine, and then come back, because we will be barreling towards commencement after spring break. Our final Patrons of the Arts show. This is the first endeavor that the Patrons of the Arts have done in the gospel, excuse me, the bluegrass genre. So we have a Grammy Award-winning blues artist, Alvin Young Bloodheart, straight from New Orleans. He is fabulous at the blues. You absolutely want to come see this show. It is going to be incredible. It is a little different than maybe anything else you have experienced when this guy does it. Tickets are always $15. Tickets on sale starting February 20th, 7:00 PM, March 19th, at the Tenon Fine Arts Center here at Three Rivers College. And that, Mr. Chairman, is the conclusion of the present.
I would like to, before we jump into executive session, jump back to the Hall of Fame banquet and the alumni reunion weekend. Eric and I were on that Hall of Fame committee. And I spoke about this at the banquet. We met, and the committee met, and the committee did a good job of researching and establishing criteria, who's gonna be in the Hall of Fame. But at some point, you talk about it, then you kind of hand it over. And the college did a wonderful job with the logistics of it. That banquet, for a first-time banquet, had a tremendous blueprint. It's gonna go, the first one will knock it out of the ballpark. It's gonna be just a fun event, year after year after year. That was a fantastic evening. Fast forward to the next day, the alumni reunion weekend. Ballgame was fun last year, but this year, it was even better. There's more stuff to do, more activities, great food. At ballgames, with me being on the radio, people feel free to share their opinions with me often. Sometimes I ask for them, sometimes I don't. But the feedback was 100% great that night. Folks, I think, had a great weekend all the way around. And at some point, a lot, you just don't add water, these events happen. A lot of your folks did a lot of work, and I'd like to acknowledge the amount of work that goes into making sure those thousands of details come into play. It was a great weekend. The weather was good, food was good, everybody had a great time. So we put our best foot forward, and I look forward to the next one. So thank you. Please share with your team, job well done on that entire weekend.
There were about six people who were the main folks that did all of the real work that was there, and they were led by Ms. Heath. But Janine Heath, Edie Dilbeck, Michelle Reynolds, Tara Gowan, and a couple of other people. Michelle Wildridge really stepped forward and did a huge amount of work, huge amount of planning on these events to make them come off. And then we had a huge number of volunteers. I mean, we had 30, 40 volunteers that weekend that came in and helped with the Hall of Fame banquet, helped with everything from student ambassadors, faculty, staff. It was a true team effort to pull this off. And I will agree with you, they did exemplary work and pulled off beautiful events.
It was fun. It was fun. It was a fun night, great food Friday night, great to see those folks be honored. And again, look forward to the next one. And the ballgame, that gymnasium's a great facility for a big crowd. You move around, see people, talk to people, people I hadn't seen in years. I had a chance to see Coach Dave Jarvis. I hadn't seen Coach Jarvis in years, and he come over and caught me during a timeout. I had him every semester, I was a student here. So it was great to see people we hadn't seen in a while. What a reunion, alumni reunion weekend's supposed to be. So, bravo, bravo. I think we move now into the executive session. Do I need a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Motion to second. Roll call.
Tracy Edson?
Yes.
Tracy Williams?
Yes.
Tracy Anderson?
Yes.
Tracy Edgar?
Yes. We will now segue into an executive session. We will now segue into an executive session.
And we're back. Okay, we're down to, on the agenda, number six, number six, section two, consideration on vote on the college policy, GAP, GAAP, 1320 consumer protection, which has added a section about students' complaints. I'm going to do that in the policy.
Yes, it is a regulatory compliance change that we are addressing in the policy. So as different things come out and different requirements get laid down, we have to update our regulations and policies. And that's simply what this is in this deal. We have consumer protection.
Any questions concerning policy 1320?
I think we should approve that policy.
Motion on the floor to approve the policy in a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Patterson?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes. Then moving on to number seven, consideration approval of all personnel actions and associated documents. And you see those listed below you there.
There is one small error on page 34. The title in the body is correct for Mr. Howard, but the header has the wrong name on it. So it's simply an error.
I'm trying to figure out the difference.
One would be a computer instructor, one would be a truck-driving instructor.
I move to approve all personnel actions and associated documentation. Motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
Mr. Patterson seconds that. And once again, we'll have a roll call.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yep.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Patterson?
Yes.
Trustee Patterson?
Anything else from anybody? We will meet once again, February the 19th. All entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? In the name of Pat Benatar, adjourn.